No, Sue, he just gave me the one minute.
Morning. Okay. Good evening, everyone. It being seven o'clock on Tuesday, May 30th, 2023, we will begin our annual town meeting. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please remain standing for a moment of silence for all those who serve in our military, at home and abroad, and for their families.
Thank you. Clerk Semino, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilor Erica?
Here.
Councilor Flaherty?
Here.
Councilor Hume?
Here.
Councilor Mackin?
Here.
Councilor Maglio?
Here.
Councilor O'Brien? Presently not here. Councilor Reynolds?
Here.
Councilor Ringus? Presently not here. Councilor Ryan?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Clerk Semino, and thank you for all those who have joined us this evening, Mayor Kokoros and members of his staff who are in the audience, as well as our town auditor, Sean McGoldrick, this evening. So I'd like to start with announcements and by congratulating and welcoming to Braintree four new police officers who were sworn in earlier this month. Mitchell Nevins, Christopher Kokoros, Patrick Ronca, and Patricia Conboy. On behalf of the council and the residents, thank you and welcome to Braintree, and we look forward to you being here and serving on our police department. I also want to say thank you to Mayor Kokoros and Vincent Fontaine, our Veteran Services Director, for a very moving ceremony on Sunday, and I know our veteran counselor, Councilor Reynolds, was also in attendance. If you were unable to attend, I highly recommend taking a few minutes and watching it on B-Cam, especially the keynote address from resident and a commander in the United States Navy, and I think it was really moving and informative event. So thank you for putting that on, and thank you to all of our veterans and their families for their service. I also want to remind residents that our ADA Transition Plan is currently up on the website. So this is the Americans with Disabilities Act. The town has had, I think, close to 45 or 50 properties evaluated for accessibility. Please log on to braintreema.gov, check it out. You can type in ADA Transition Plan, it will pop up. Review the documents, enter your comments. We're really looking for resident participation in this. You know the town facilities best that you visit, and we're looking forward to hearing from you on it. That will be open until Friday, June 9th. Are there any other announcements from councilors? Councilor Flaherty?
I'd like to invite everyone in Braintree to join Sustainable Braintree and the High School Student Environmental Club in an effort to remove non-native invasive plants from Pond Meadow Park. Invasive plants are a problem because they sprout earlier than other plants, they leaf out fast, and then they shade the native plants that should be growing there, and then they thrive. And as they thrive, they deplete the soil of the nutrients that any other plant would use, and they thrive even more. Some of them even change the pH of the soil so that the soil supports them better than it would anybody else. So what it results in is a reduction in biodiversity. So you have only one kind of plant, which means that only, you know, that many fewer insects can survive on the plants, which affects the animals pretty fast. If you understand anything about the ecosystem, you know that biodiversity is key to a healthy one. This is not a problem that's like really far away, like the garbage patch out in the middle of the ocean, or the trees in the Amazon rainforest. This is in our backyard. And the good news about invasive plants is that they're really easy to take out, you just pull them up. It just takes a certain amount of elbow grease. So our event will be on June 11th at Pond Meadow Park from 10 to 12, and come on out and help. It would be great to see you there. That's all.
Thank you very much, Councilor Flaherty. Any other announcements from councilors this evening? Right, with that, I will move on to our communications, and I'd invite Mayor Kokoros up to discuss the Clean Harbors Community Meeting. Thank you, Mr. Kokoros, Mayor Kokoros.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, councilors. We are holding a meeting at East Middle School, and that will be on June 5th. And this meeting is going to give an update on Clean Harbors and an opportunity for residents to come and speak. We will have members from Clean Harbors, DEP, a number of other organizations, as well as Representative Mark Cuzak, Senator Keenan, and Senator Walter Timmertie will be there as well. So we just wanted to invite everyone in the public so that they can come and get an update and also have an opportunity to comment at that meeting.
Thank you very much, Mayor Kokoros. We'll be looking forward to that. All right, so moving on to our approval of minutes. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of February 28th, 2023?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that is unanimous. All right, we have several public hearings on our agenda tonight as we move on to the old business portion of our meeting. So just for residents who are here or listening at home, what we need to do is we need to take a vote to open each of the public hearings, we need to take a vote to close each of the public hearings, and that happens before we take a vote on the actual motion before us. So thank you for your patience as we go through some of the procedural steps. And I would also like to offer, unless there's any objections from my colleagues on the council, I propose that we take the agenda out of order this evening so that we may close out fiscal year 2023 and do the supplemental number two before we move on to the FY 2024 budget. Any objections to that? Okay, and thank you, Councilor Reynolds, for that suggestion. All right, so with that, do we have a motion to open public hearing for Order 23030?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the public hearing is open. I will turn now to Councilor Reynolds, the Chairman of the Ways and Means Committee, for their recommendation on Order 23030.
Thank you, Madam President. Recently, the Ways and Means Committee voted unanimously to recommend approval on supplemental number two, 23023.
Thank you very much, Councilor Reynolds. Would any member of the mayor's office wish to speak on the supplemental 23030? Mayor Kokoros.
Thank you, Madam President. I want to thank the Ways and Means Committee for a favorable recommendation. This allows us to close out some of our expenditures for the year and also allows us to increase some of the revolving funds that are necessary to keep operations going. And as far as some of the work that we want to do to our buildings, asbestos is one of the things that we deal with on a regular basis, so we also want to have money for remediation for those items. So I stand to ask you to vote in favor of this, and appreciate the hard work that the Ways and Means Committee has done on reviewing this supplemental budget. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mayor Kokoros. I also want to recognize we do have Councilor O'Brien and Councilor Ringus who have joined us. All right, is there any member of the council who wishes to speak on supplemental number two? That's Order 23030. Councilor Flaherty?
What I would note about this supplemental is that a great deal of it is aimed at correcting problems to make our schools, our school buildings fundamentally operational. We are pouring an enormous sum of money into our public school buildings, which are old and may have to be, you know, as we move forward with improved school buildings, these buildings may not be what we go with in the long run. It remains to be seen. So we're putting a lot of money into very old school buildings, which we may have to put to some other different use before the repairs or improvements that we make have lived their full life. That's the situation that we're in. We can't not do it. We have to contend with the asbestos and the other issues that we're going to deal with, but Braintree's not in a good situation with our buildings when we have to put this kind of money into something that may outlive its life before too long.
Thank you, Councilor Flaherty. Any other councilors wish to comment on Order 23030? Councilor Hume?
I just want to follow up on that as a former member of the school committee and the school building committee. We have partnered with MSBA on all of our school buildings, and when we partner with them, the funding we receive, we are stating that there is a useful place from anywhere from 25 to 50 years. So we are going to be using, we have to use our schools for school buildings, whether they are Braintree Public Schools or other, but they have to be used for that for the lifetime of what MSBA deems them, which is 50 years, I believe, in all the funding that we've received with them. But, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Hume. Any other counselor wish to comment on this order before us? I would just like to add that if, for those who may not have seen the Ways and Means hearing last Monday, I think one of the things that we're going to benefit from in taking up this supplemental is, as Mayor Kokoros mentioned, an asbestos remediation plan. And Mr. McGurty, please correct me if I'm wrong, but the way I understand it is, what this is going to do is allow us to have funding available so that we can actually apply for grants and other means of funding asbestos remediation in our public schools, which is, of course, paramount to ensuring not the health and safety of our students and the buildings in the long run. So while this is a borrowing, it is a strategy to help us tackle this over the long run that I think is very wise and prudent. So I want to thank Mr. McGurty and his team for all the work they've done and all the efforts they've put in into the school buildings over the last nine to 10 months that he's been, has taken that over. Are there members of the council? Okay, are there any members of the public who would wish to speak? And again, this is for Order 23030, which is our supplemental appropriation. Okay, seeing none, do we have a motion to close the public hearing on Order 23030?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the public hearing is now closed. With that, I would ask, do we have a motion on the order at hand?
Yes, motion one, asbestos remediation in building repairs. Town of Braintree, Massachusetts, in town council ordered that the town of Braintree appropriates the sum of $3,500,000 to pay costs for the following capital projects. Project asbestos removal and remediation amount 1.5 million, authorizing statute, Chapter 44, Section 7, 1. Project building repairs amount 2 million, authorizing statute, Chapter 44, Section 7, 1. And for the payment of all of the costs incidental and related thereto, that the amounts indicated above for each project are estimates, and that the mayor may allocate more funds to any one or more of such projects and less to others, so long as in the judgment of the mayor, each of the projects described above can be completed within the total appropriation made by this order. That to meet this appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the mayor is authorized to borrow said amount under in pursuant to the authorizing statutes described above or pursuant to any other enabling authority and to issue bonds or notes of the town, therefore, so moved.
Second.
Thank you, councilors Ryan and Hume. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is unanimous. Number two?
Number two, human resources in law. Motion that the sum of $284,426 be transferred from the Police Patrol Bureau Program, O-4 sworn personnel line, $407,749.23 be transferred from the Finance Administration Program, O-1 reserve account, $448,251 be transferred from the Human Resources Employee Benefits Program, O-4 reserve account, and $191,000 of FY 2022 certified free cash for a total of $1,331,426.23 be transferred to the following accounts. $1,290,426.23 be transferred to the Human Resources FY 23 Salary Reserve Article, $30,000 Law Administration Program, O-1 Outside Legal Services, $1,000 Law Administration Program, O-1 Dues, Memberships, Travel, $10,000 Finance Administration Program, O-1 Consultant Line, so moved.
Second.
Thank you, councilors Ryan and Hume. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That is unanimous.
Motion three, schools utility. Motion that the sum of $292,309 be transferred from the Police Patrol Bureau Program, O-4 sworn personnel line, $49,381 be transferred from the DPW Snow and Ice Program, 11 Outside Contractor Account, and $88,273 of the FY 2023 certified free cash for a total of $429,963 be transferred to the following accounts. $54,955 be transferred to the DPW School Utilities Program, 19 Natural Gas Account, $361,008 be transferred to the DPW School Utilities Program, 19 Electric Account, $10,000 be transferred to the DPW School Utilities Program, 19 Water Sore Account, $4,000 be transferred to the DPW Schools Utility Program, 19 Gas Account, so moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is unanimous.
Motion four, Fire Department. Motion that the sum of $145,008 be transferred from the Police Patrol Bureau Program, O-4 sworn personnel account, to be transferred to the Fire Suppression Program, O-4 Overtime Account, so moved.
Second.
Thank you, councilors Ryan and Hume. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is unanimous.
Five, DPW Department. Motion that the sum of $40,000 of FY 22 certified free cash to the following accounts. $20,000 be transferred to the DPW Traffic Program, 10 Roadway Markings Account, $20,000 be transferred to the DPW Grounds Division Program, 18 Overtime Account, so moved.
Second.
Thank you, councilors Ryan and Hume. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is unanimous.
Six, Golf. Motion that the sum of $40,000 be transferred from the Golf Golf Cart Operations Program, O-6 Golf Cart Lease Account, and $138,900 of FY 22 Golf Certified Retainer earnings for a total of $178,900 be transferred to the following accounts. $47,000 be transferred to the Golf Administration Program, O-1 Part-Time Labor Account, $5,900 be transferred to the Golf Administration Program, O-1 Group Medical and Life Account, $5,000 be transferred to the Golf Administration Program, O-1 Credit Card Fees Account, $17,000 be transferred to the Golf Building Maintenance Program, O-2 Security Fire Alarm Fees Account, $4,000 be transferred to Golf Equipment Maintenance Program, O-3 Outside Motor Vehicle Repair Account, $10,000 be transferred to Golf Equipment Maintenance Program, O-3 Gas Account, $5,000 be transferred to the Golf Equipment Maintenance Program, O-3 Diesel Account, $5,000 be transferred to the Golf Turf Management Program, O-4 Lime and Fertilizer Account, $5,000 be transferred to the Golf Turf Maintenance Program, O-4 Seed Account, $75,000 be transferred to the Golf Golf Shop Operations Program, O-5 Professional Staff Account, so moved.
Second.
Thank you, councilors Ryan and Hume. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is unanimous.
Next motion, seven, Golf Pro Shop. Motion that in accordance with the provisions of Chapter 44, Section 53E and a half of the general laws, the maximum amount that may be spent by the mayor in conjunction with the Golf Green Superintendent from the revolving fund monies without further appropriation during the fiscal year commencing July 1st, 2022, to pay for salaries, expenses, and contractual services associated with the operation of the golf course, Pro Shop be increased to $300,000, so moved.
Second.
Thank you, councilors Ryan and Hume. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is unanimous.
Next motion, eight, Golf Food Services. Motion that in accordance with the provisions of Chapter 44, Section 53E and a half of the general laws, the maximum amount that may be spent by the mayor in conjunction with the Golf Green Superintendent from the revolving fund monies without further appropriation during the fiscal year commencing July 1st, 2022, to pay for salaries, expenses, and contractual services associated with the operation of the Golf Course food service, may be increased to $550,000, so moved.
Second.
Thank you, councilors Ryan and Hume. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is unanimous. Thank you very much, and congratulations on supplemental number two. All right, we will now go back on our agenda, and we're going to start talking about our fiscal year budgets. Before we do that, I do want to say sincere thanks to the Ways and Means Committee chaired by Councilor Reynolds and members Maglio and Vice Chair Flaherty. They spent really the entirety of the month of May combing through the budget, and if anybody has seen the, you know, thousand-plus pages, it is no small feat. And I, on behalf of the council and by extension the residents, want to thank you all for the time, effort, and thoughtfulness that went into all of those hearings, so thank you. So with that, I would like to ask, is there a motion to open the public hearing for 23025, Mayor, FY 2024 operating budget, or take up any action relative thereto?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, councilors Ryan and Hume. All those in favor to open the public hearing?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that is unanimous. Councilor Reynolds, I will turn to you for the committee's recommendation.
Thank you very much, Madam President. Early this evening, the committee and Ways and Means met and voted two in favor, one opposed, for a favorable recommendation to the full council for Order 23025.
Thank you very much, Councilor Reynolds. Is there anyone from the mayor's office who would wish to speak? Mayor Kokoros, welcome back.
Thank you, Council President, councilors, and thank you to the Ways and Means Committee for all your hard work, and thank you for the favorable recommendation. I just want to take a moment and recognize many of my staff members that are here today from my office. We have Chief of Staff Margaret La Forest, we have Kate Naughton, Dan Hickey. We also have, as everybody knows, Municipal Finance Ed Spelman, Lorraine C., we have Barbara Walls from the Treasurer Collector's Office. We have from Elder Affairs, Shamilla Biswa, Licensing and Inspections, Mary Beth McGrath, Planning, Melissa Santucci-Rozzi, Legal, Crystal Huff. We also have from our DPW, Jim Ossenol, Ben Hulk, Lou Dutton, John Thompson, Mike McGurty. We also have Hillary Waite, Rob DeVito, Ryan Matheson, Jeff Kuntz. And from Parks and Rec, we have Chris Griffin. And from our Police Department, Chief DeBois, we have Mary Kenny, Sergeant Corey Chambers, Fire Chief Jim O'Brien, Human Resources Cindy DePina. We have our Superintendent Jim Lee, and we also have Town Clerk Jim Casey. Welcome, everyone, and thank you for working so hard on putting this budget together. They are really the heart and soul of our budget and our operations overall, and I appreciate everything they do for the town and on my behalf every day. I'm pleased to present you with a fully funded fiscal year 24 budget, which provides the highest level of services to our residents. The School Department is being fully funded, with over 50% of our budget allocated in support of our schools, and we remain committed to supporting our students and educators. Additionally, I'm delighted to state that the construction of the New South Middle School is progressing on schedule within budget, and it's slated to open this fall. We also have another part of what came from the debt exclusion is four roof replacements. Those roof replacements are going to take place this summer, and it'll be Highlands, Hollis, Flaherty, and Liberty that will be done. And I know that, you know, my boys went to Highlands, and it was constantly leaking, and we had barrels everywhere. So it's going to be really nice to have these roofs fixed so that we can, as we work on the insides of these buildings, we can at least know that we're not going to have leakage coming in and destroying things. We also are utilizing part of our debt exclusion for us, school security. It's so important in today's world, and we have some great things that are coming down the line on school security. The consolidation of our facilities has really been quite a success. I thank Mike McGurty for all his hard work, and all of his staff, and all the custodians, and everyone that is involved, both on the school side and the town side, coming together. There's been a lot of positive feedback from our principals and our superintendent as far as getting things done. It's nice to have this combined group. They work really well together. In our police budget, we've funded an additional school resource officer. Post-pandemic, we really need more assistance in the schools, and very happy that we're able to do that. And more importantly, or as important, we've created a traffic division, and this traffic division is going to reduce speeding and increase road safety. And, you know, I know that each and every one of you probably get calls on a regular basis in regards to someone speeding down the street or cutting through. So this is going to give us an option, as opposed to having to put speed cushions and other things all through neighborhoods. This will give us the ability to deter individuals from breaking the law. So very excited about that. It's been a number of years that we've been trying to bring this back, and we have done it in this budget. We also, you know, have fully funded our fire department, and we are at the designing of the stage of the renovations for our headquarters, which is something that some of the councilors here have have been waiting for for maybe close to a decade and had taken votes over the past. And finally, we're at the point where we're moving forward with getting this done, and we look forward to it being completed. And as you may or may not know, we worked on the Galvin House as a savings for housing our firefighters while the renovations are being done. So it was twofold. We helped the Historical Society bring a building back to life, but also have the ability to utilize it during the construction. And our enterprise funds, as you've probably seen through the budget, are doing very well. Specifically, I'd like to bring up the water and sewer. And water and sewer, which is near and dear to my heart, and I know Councilor Ryan's as well, not only has a very strong reserve, which has allowed us to utilize money towards some capital improvements, but also we created five tiers, and what we were able to do is we were able to freeze the rate in Tier One and Tier Two, which is pretty much the residents of the town utilize or end up in Tier One and Tier Two. Sometimes they end up in Tier Three, which we've significantly reduced. So the budget is fully funded. It is doing very well. It's strong. And we are in the, you know, midst of building a new treatment plant along with Holbrook and Randolph. And I'm really happy to say that in that process, we've received zero percent interest on the loan, which is a savings of approximately twenty million dollars over the course of the loan, which is amazing. So I'd also just like to thank all of our town employees, which, you know, this budget represents. These are the folks that, you know, in our DPW, when you look outside, you know how beautiful the town is as you go around to our parks, and you look out here at Town Hall, you see the pride and ownership and the work that they put in to their jobs every day. The folks, the staff within our town buildings, our office employees, library, all of these different folks. This budget represents all the hard work that they do every day for the citizens of Braintree. And I am very grateful for everything they do, and I thank them for how hard they work on behalf of our town. So during COVID, we experienced major revenue losses. We made significant decreases of ninety, fifty, and twenty-five percent local receipts, and our conservative budgeting approach has helped us through these difficult times. We continue to see increases in our local receipts, and that trend continues moving forward into this budget. Because we've used caution in projecting our local receipts, we were able to certify free cash at the end of fiscal year twenty-two at eight-point-five million dollars, doubling our previous year's certified free cash. Our increased free cash has given us the ability to replace the school ESER grant funds that were used, as well as the ARPA fund grants that were used, totally nearly five million dollars in twenty-three's budget. Our projected free cash for the end of this fiscal year, even though we're drawing down on it, will be approximately nine-point-two million dollars. This is a combination of additional revenue from local receipts, payment from the billboard, and some county ARPA funds. In looking at, down the road at new revenue sources, we look at things like Four Hundred Wood Road, our first life science company, Integra, and this will add nearly two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars in new taxes. And there's also a tenant that's going to take the fifty-seven thousand square feet that is the rest of this Four Hundred Wood Road building, and they're in the process of permitting now. And we will see additional recurring revenues once they've built out their location as well. So very positive there. As you may know, we have CVS on Liberty Street that's under construction. We have a property that we have owned and not received any taxes for, the Allen Street property, which has been approved for funding by the state and is soon to close. That is approximately thirty million in new development, estimating somewhere between five and six-hundred thousand dollars in new taxes, as well as permit fees. We also have our Banner Park development, which has switched gears a little bit into studio production facility. So that's two-hundred-seventy-two thousand square feet, and that will generate over eight million and at least one and a half million in permit fees over the next ten years. We have a proposal that's come in on a former development that did not come to fruition. That's on Hancock Street, and the proposal is for thirty-one units. That would be new construction, new tax revenue. And as we make our way through the MBTA zoning, the TOD is being developed by our planning department as we speak. And we've had a number of discussions with some larger developers interested in properties that would fall within that range, and Armstrong Cork is one of the properties, which could be anywhere between three to five million in new taxes and several million in permit fees to be built out. We know that Motel Six is in the permit process right now, which would, you know, bring some new life to it. And we also have, in the pilot program for the Triton Regional Treatment Plant, we have one police officer and two firefighters that would be paid for by Triton, which is some more savings there as well. And one of the proposals that we are working on, what the school committee is working on, is to create a full kindergarten center and pre-K, and this would free up a building and allow us to collect rent on the inadequate building. And in addition to that, we also have a state community college that is interested, and we are working with them to come into Braintree High School into the section that would be vacated by the pre-K. Not only would it provide financial support and help, but it would also give our students an opportunity to earn college credits while they're in high school. So wonderful things happening there. And our communication center, the Regional Dispatch Center, in which we've received over four million dollars in grants for, is currently in the process of design. We have chosen a design, an architect to do the design. And when completed, the projections in savings, both because of grant money to pay for employees there and savings in overtime and some other things, we are looking at approximately a million dollars in savings in the first year and most likely somewhere in the seven-hundred thousand in the next year, and so on and so on. But it's a very good thing that we have so many things on the horizon, and these are the things that we know about. I think that, you know, we have moved forward through some difficult times. And it's good for us to be at a point now where we can fund our budget without having to utilize ESER or ARPA grants directly into our funds and not only use some of the free cash to offset some of these expenses, but at the same time rebuild that free cash. So with that and this strong budget, I believe that really keeps all of our services at the highest level, I would ask the council for their full support in approving this annual town meeting budget. And if you have any specific questions on it, on the budget, I do have all of my staff here to answer any specific questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Merrick Kikoros. Thank you, and thank you for naming all of your staff members who are here this evening, and thank you again for being in attendance tonight. So with that, I would like to open it up to my colleagues on the council for questions or comments. As the mayor said, if there's specific questions for department heads, they are here tonight to assist. Counselor Ryan?
Thank you. I want to again thank the council of Ways and Means for all the hard work that they did and all the meetings they had reviewing this budget and might appear to the folks watching at home that were going to vote on this very quickly, but really appreciate all the work that you folks did and the numerous meetings and all the nights and hours that you worked on it. It's a very thankless job, and it's one that's much needed. So thank you very much. Just wanted to make that comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Ryan, and I would echo that. Counselor Reynolds?
Thank you, Madam President. I know this first vote up is on the twenty-three zero-two-five, the operating budget.
That is correct.
So I just wanted to use this opportunity to make a statement, if I may, based on all the work that we have done, a lot of the detail, due diligence that we have performed. We thank all of the members of the mayor's staff for making themselves available during a very tedious, long number of nights, and I know a baptism by fire by the chief of staff. We appreciated your willingness to stick it out with all of us, but in particular, Mr. Spellman has shown himself to be the marathon man. He really has been doing this for a number of years, and he's got an incredible amount of expertise in subject matter, expertise to be more particular. However, it did not make the job any easier for us, and I found this to be a very, very difficult budget. And I looked at this budget not only from this year, but I look out over the horizon as we, where we've come from and where we're going. So just a brief statement, if I may. This last fiscal year, which comes to an official end on June thirtieth, has been a particularly tough going for the town, especially from a revenue availability standpoint. This fiscal year has seen the town have a heavy reliance on bonding and borrowing to pay for many capital and repairs that were absolutely necessary to keep our town and our school buildings running. We saw two supplemental budgets submitted by the mayor in order to pay for the extensive amounts of fire and police overtime, dollars that were well beyond the original one-point-four million budgeted for overtime in the current fiscal year twenty-twenty-three. Additionally, the supplemental budgets had an overreliance on sweeping dollars from numerous department budgets to help pay for those two supplemental budgets in question. Our town's free cash reserve shrunk to levels that raised enough concern from the municipal bond rating agencies to take an action of downgrading Braintree's bond rating with a noted negative outlook for our financial future. Additionally, our operating stabilization and reserve funds are at historic lows, leaving Braintree with an extremely small financial safety net. The Ways and Means Committee has spent the last month meeting three nights a week to fully vet the fiscal twenty-twenty-four budget submitted by Mayor Kikoros. I was surprised by the five-point-four percent increase amount over budget, over the fiscal year twenty-twenty-three budget. The revenue projects for fiscal twenty-four are optimistic, but our ability to increase our projected spending is due to the unexpected rapid increase of interest rates increased by the Fed over the last year, which meant to slow down inflation. Fortunately, what it did for us is increase our investment income. The upside for a higher interest rate was that our investment returns were subject to higher interest rate returns. The downside is we pay higher interest rates on our borrowing. As our national economy heads into the next fiscal year, many economists are split on what our economy may encounter in terms of inflation fears, supply chain increases still issues increasing, still permeating across our economy and impacting our town's ability to accurately estimate pricing for major capital projects. Due to the global supply chain issues and construction material price increases for the Triton Water Treatment Plant, Braintree had to put up double the funds that what we originally intended to spend, just as a case in point. Also, the town is still searching for solutions to cutting public safety overtime so as to prevent budget busting impacts on our town's overall operating budget going into the next year. We are all here tonight, and those watching from home need to fully understand that the federal financial COVID funds have dried up. There is no more. One-time infusions from the federal and state government that have been relied upon heavily by Braintree will no longer be available to augment our cash position. Braintree had a serious revenue problem well before COVID, and with our community, state, and country now moving beyond COVID, we have an even more perilous revenue outlook coming over the next few years. In the last four years, there have been no executive branch revenue generation policies articulated or published, no cost containment policies, nor any meaningful development or redevelopment initiatives. Housing has sat vacant. The voices of no to growth in Braintree have captured the executive office and have left our town in deeply unprepared state. Even if there is a change of heart from our executive branch on committing to reliable growth policy, these types of programs will not happen overnight. Without a plan on revenue, we should be very concerned about our ability to create appropriate revenue capabilities to sustain the budget over the next few years due to our reduced reserves and borrowing costs becoming more expensive, in part due to the drop of our town's bond rating and that subsequent higher interest rates that Braintree will now pay when borrowing. We are entering a financial landscape that, as a town, we have not seen in many years. The possibility of our great town having to live month to month is not a good strategy for Braintree. As for fiscal twenty-twenty-five looms, we as a town will be looking at significant increases in payroll due to the five percent increase about to hit our largest union in towns and the possibility for the second and third largest unions in towns as well from a look-back perspective in their contracts. As much as our employees deserve raises in order to keep up with inflation, our town leadership has not prepared us to fulfill this increased spending responsibility. The proposed fiscal year twenty-four is a hopeful budget, but not without its concerns. Without experiences of any major financial surprises, or even we should be able to navigate the year ahead with a scrutinizing eye for overtime costs and effective preventive maintenance diligence, it will be a challenging year for us. It's our ability to position ourselves as a town to fund ourselves year over year. A case in point is our school's funding needs for fiscal twenty-five will necessitate a seven-point-five to eight percent increase just to keep it level-funded. That's fiscal year twenty-twenty-five, following the current year that we're voting on now. This increase is due to the scheduled five percent pay increases for the members of our town's largest union. The choices for us are stark. One, cut into our revenues, which could negatively affect our bond rating even further, grow our revenues in an atmosphere of loud voices in our community calling for no growth, plus any projects that have been passed to date are either too little or too far into the future. Or number three, cut expenses, which means cuts to services and staff. My vote tonight is not about fiscal twenty-four. It's about the sustainability of our fiscal health beyond fiscal twenty-four. I cannot in good conscience at this time vote for this operating budget due to those reasons I have just stated. This does not address what I feel is a even larger problem that we're going to face in fiscal twenty-five and twenty-six. I would be open to any kind of discussions with any of the other council members, with the mayor's office, to take a look at the operating budget one more time, make some tough choices. Something that we can do to better position ourselves for twenty-five. At this point, I think it's going to be a very rough ride. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor Reynolds. Any other counselors' questions or comments? Counselor Flaherty?
Thank you. As a member of the Committee of Ways and Means, I have combed through every single line of this budget. I have asked dozens of questions to put these numbers into context and to ascertain the extent to which this budget does and does not meet the needs of our community. So here are my conclusions. This is a pandemic budget in a post-pandemic time. And what I mean is this. In order to fund the services that the town provides for residents, we are using four-point-two million dollars of our free cash because we can't afford to meet those costs without it. In a household budget, this would be like dipping into your life savings to pay for your rent. Four-point-two million dollars is fully half the total certified free cash we have. half the total certified free cash we have. And even with this money, this budget fails to restore any of the positions that we cut during the pandemic. We lost teachers, inspectors, planners, and other critical staff during that time, and this budget doesn't bring any of those people back. Our situation is so grave that instead of using the profits made by our summer recreation program last year to grow and improve that program so it can serve more kids in more ways, even that comparatively humble sum of money had to be plowed into the general fund to help subsidize all our other needs. So, what does that mean? It means that this budget keeps the lights on for Braintree, but only because we are functioning at pandemic levels. We are acting as though it is business as usual, but we are not able to fund business as usual. And everywhere you look, you can tell. A lot of noise has already been made over the lost teachers, but anyone who looks at our MCAS scores will see that they have dropped in every category. So, we know those teachers are needed now more than ever. But what you may not recognize is that we have also lost town inspectors, which weakens our ability to enforce the building and safety codes that we have in place. We've lost planners, which weakens our ability to guide development in town. These things make it harder to do business in Braintree. They make it easy to let standards slide. Another problem with this budget is that in order to make the numbers come out right, certain things are underaccounted for financially. And the first of these is building maintenance. When you look at Braintree's departmental budgets, you see that the police department and the town hall have $25,000 apiece for building repairs, while the fire department only has $5,000 allocated for maintenance for all three fire buildings. The elder affairs department has only $3,000 for building repairs, and the library has nothing. And to be fair, there's $87,000 in the DPW facilities budget that could be applied to any town building, and there's additional monies for plumbing and heating and ventilation and so on. But because these lines are not slated for any particular building, in all likelihood, they will go to whichever of our old outdated buildings presents the earliest need because we are not in a position to be focused on preventative maintenance. What we do is chase the problems. Without the money needed to properly maintain our buildings, we perpetuate the problem of deferred maintenance, which invariably leads to another hidden cost, insurance. Because we had to call upon our insurance policies to help us pay for emergency school roofs in 2018 and then emergency electrical issues at the high school in the fall of 2022, we are now paying half a million dollars more annually in insurance than we were in 2020. It's an increase that will impact us for a long time, and it can go up if we have any additional catastrophic building failures, which we might. This budget also underaccounts for overtime costs. Overtime is exceedingly tricky to budget for. But this year, through supplemental budgets, we have now approved more than half a million dollars in overtime money for the fire department over and above what was budgeted for last year. But even though we know that the drivers of overtime are not substantially different this year than last, this budget does not significantly increase anticipated overtime costs. And when we do that, we make the budget less honest than it should be. All that being said, this budget and the money that it represents, this is the pie that we have. The pie might be anemic, and the fact that we had to use free cash to make the pie in the first place is like using next year's pie ingredients to make this year's pie. The slices of pie, though, have been divvied up appropriately. What is abundantly clear to me is that our ability to continue services at their current level depends on us finding ways to get to to collect more revenue. The conversation that this town needs to have now is how we want to do that. Tonight, I'm going to support this budget because I think it uses the resources we have appropriately. But I hope that, over the course of the year, we can look for real solutions to our revenue problems because the people we hurt, if we don't do that, is ourselves.
Thank you, Counselor Flaherty. Any other counselors wish to speak at this time? Okay, that, I will come back to the counselors, but I'd like to open it up to members of the public. If there's any member of the public who wishes to speak, and this is on the general operating budget, we will be following this with the community preservation budget, the revolve and the revolving fund budget, just for clarity's sake. So, members of the public wish to speak. Okay? Any other counselors? Counselor Maglio.
Thank you. So, this is my second round of budget hearings for the town council since being a counselor. And last year, it was pretty confusing. This year, I'd have to say it was it's sort of the more you know, the more you realize you don't. And what we did is we dug deep. We dug very, very deep. We had nine meetings, including the one that we had just before this meeting. We spent 24 hours just in meetings, talking to staff, asking questions. We spent a whole other, and I can't speak for my my fellow members of the Ways and Means Committee, but I can speak for myself. I would say for every meeting, for every hour here was another hour prepping for being here. So, that's a lot of hours. It's a lot of time. It's a lot of attention, and it's a lot of details. And this is an agonizing decision to make because one of the things that we heard over and over again throughout these hearings is that we didn't hear that this is the highest level of services that we're funding. What we heard is that the budget isn't enough for them to get done what they need to get done. And that that that's a concern. We we heard from a lot of we got a lot of information. Last week, one of the things that the town auditor said was he warned of the difference between affordability, which is using free cash to make ends meet, and sustainability, which is generating enough new and recurring revenue sources. Folks, we are squeaking by with FY '24, and it's obvious that '25 is looming ahead of us, and it's looking pretty bleak. We absolutely need new revenue. Our reliance on one-time sources is not sustainable. We need action at every level. For example, we need to be enforcing traffic fines. We need to be collecting fees from health code and blight violations. We need to increase our tax trash fees so that our fees actually cover the cost of trash collections. And we need to look at the rest of our fees that have not been increased in decades and determining why. Now, these are small measures that are not going to move the needle in a big way, but they're also not going to be a big hit on our wallets. But then there's a whole other level in terms of the town looking at overtime and equity across all departments. Certainly, we need enough firefighters and police officers on the payroll to avoid millions in overtime costs. We also need to be mindful of the many employees at the municipal level who also work hard many hours and and don't get overtime. And and think about what where is that equity when people are doing more than their one job that they're supposed to be doing, but they're carrying the slack from positions that have gone unfilled. We need to do a deep dive into empty commercial properties and figure out why they're empty. We need to come up with business-friendly, pedestrian-friendly, and community-friendly solutions that can support businesses that could otherwise be thriving. In terms of our public funding streams, our legislative delegation can help to identify opportunities that may be coming down the pike, but the town needs to be proactive and ready. We can't just wait and see what comes. We we need to involve the entire civic community in being part of the vision and being in part being involved in early stages of planning for new ideas and new developments. We need to also the town needs to engage in a frank conversation with residents. That's where leadership needs to be is because if 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 we're not all hands on deck going after the items that I just listed, then the reality is we're going to have higher taxes or fewer services or both. To reference the town auditor one more time, all of the departments want more, all of them need more, but how you pay for it is the bottom line. And it comes down to the simple fact that creating more money to spend is how we create a sustainable and affordable Braintree with full, robust services.
Thank you, Counselor Maglio. Counselor Ringus?
First off, thank you to everyone who's been involved in the budget process. We've heard a little bit about it tonight. But if you're just watching at home to and you tune into this sort of annual town meeting every year, you'll hear Counselor Ryan in a few moments go through a series of motions, a lot of numbers being thrown out. But those numbers come from a lot of hard work put in by a lot of people. And it really starts months before tonight with department heads formulating budgets and working with the mayor's office to see what they can where they're looking at in terms of their numbers within their individual departments. So, first off, and I know many of them are here tonight, thank you to the department heads and those folks who are working on those numbers in the months before this meeting. Thank you to the mayor's office and his staff for their work in sort of formulating this. As we've heard, it is not a it is sort of a not what we want to see, but is what we have before us tonight. And I'll speak a little bit more about that in a few moments. Thank you, as we've already said, to the members of the Ways and Means. During this time period, it is by far the most active committee within the council. It is nights and nights and endless nights of meeting and going line by line by line over numbers. And it is important, important work, but of course, it can be monotonous. So, thank you to those members and for the tough questions they asked. And if you haven't followed those meetings, it it's important to note the hard work that goes in. And thank you to Counselor Reynolds for his stewardship. He brings a breadth of experience to that position, and we're lucky to have him on the council to guide us through that process. Counselor Reynolds has indicated tonight that he's not going to support this. I, on the other hand, will support it, though I do appreciate the thoughts that Counselor Reynolds expressed, and I appreciate the thoughts expressed by both Counselors Maglio and Counselor Flaherty. Obviously, I think Counselor Flaherty did put it put it in a very nice analogy and one I wouldn't have thought of of using a pie, but it's a it's a very correct analogy in that we are sort of creating a pie, and we can only make that pie from the ingredients that that we have at hand right now. And that is the budget that is before us. Obviously, COVID took a hard took took a took a lot out of a lot of personal individual budgets and household budgets. It affected small businesses as well, and obviously municipalities were not spared that either. And we're seeing that as we move forward from COVID, some of the losses we suffered. But I think as Counselor Reynolds indicated, this was not just COVID that got us to the situation. It is sort of years of sort of building up. And I think we are now in a in a spot where we have to make some very hard decisions as we move forward. For tonight's purposes, we do have a budget before us. That budget meets the needs that we need it to need it to. And as such, I'll be supportive of it. But I do think as we move forward from tonight, and I I expressed similar sentiments last year, as many of us who sat here did, we as a council, we as department heads, we as the mayor's administration, we have some tough decisions to make. We have to look at all facets of ways to create new revenue coming into town. We're at the point now where we can't just continue to sustain what we're doing. We have to make some aggressive moves to see how we can bring more money into the town so that we can not only meet the needs that are before us, but also continue to grow. I know that folks lament, you know, some of the streets that we see, folks lament the state of some of our town buildings. We had a significant significant publicity around the toughness of sort of bringing the teachers' contract fruition, and we have other contracts that still that still stand out there. So, we need to ensure that we sustain what Braintree is used to, but but if we're sustaining, then we're plateauing. And when you plateau, you eventually wither and you die. So, we need to ensure that we're not only sustaining, that we're moving past that plateau, and that we're growing because that's what the town of Braintree and its residents deserve. I did note that some of these tough decisions that are going to come come from department heads and the mayor's office and the town council, but it really is going to be a community effort. We are going to need every resident to be engaged because as we move forward, there are some decisions to be made, not just by elected officials and and those appointed into certain offices, but by the town as a whole. Braintree in some ways has suffered for many years from this identity crisis, where we wanted to have the best of everything, but we didn't, but we sort of lauded the fact that we had such low property taxes and such low fees. And I think we have to take a long, hard look at the fact that we can't have everything we want. We can't continue to grow without sort of finding a way to make that happen. And part of that, I think, is residents' need to sort of be engaged and know that we can't say no to every proposal that comes before us. We have to open our open up to the thought that some things that maybe weren't as tasteful in years past or that we didn't want to see in in town as much, we have to find ways to sort of assimilate everything into one. Because I don't think we're going to generate the monies needed to move forward with just one sort of new revenue stream. Like Counselor Maglio said, there are ways to enforce or possibly look at fees, but that will generate only only so much new cash. And we can't continue to rely on the free cash. And as Counselor Flaherty correctly pointed out, that would be the equivalent of continually dipping into your savings to pay for your normal everyday expenses. So, I don't think tonight should be about doom and gloom. I think hopefully, we'll be passing an operating budget that we can move forward with and be happy to know that we're at least going to sustain what we need. But again, moving forward from this point, I do think that we all need to sort of put our our working hats back on, get back to the drawing board, and see what we can do to ensure that we continually move forward. So, thank you.
Thank you very much, Counselor Ringus. Counselor Ryan for the second time?
Thank you, Counselor President. I'm going to be supporting this budget tonight. I I think that Braintree is facing the same financial issues that every city in town and the Commonwealth of Massachusetts is facing. And I actually think we're in a little better shape because we have a better commercial base to rely on. But we're facing it's not only specific to Braintree, the issues that we're facing. I think when we talk about the budget and we've talked about the school department and the raises, I think we all want to pay our employees what they're worth. And it's very difficult financial times that we're in now, and people, you know, giving people what they're worth is very important. And I fully support that. And we have to make decisions that we do have the revenues to pay for that. So, as Counselor Ringus said, we can't say no to everything. And I'm hoping that in the future, we do have some projects that we can all agree are the right things for the town of Braintree. And because I know that I've talked to constituents that want to see teachers fairly compensated, but they want to say no to development as well. And it's it's a tough it's it's not a good match. And we have to make some tough decisions. And I think hopefully, we're going to have we'll be okay for FY '24 and moving into '25, but I don't think it's anything particular to the town of Braintree. I think every city in town and the Commonwealth of Massachusetts or most of them are looking at difficult times as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Ryan. Other counselors' comments?
Okay, I'd like to make a statement and echo some of the sentiments of my colleagues this evening. And as I was reviewing the budget and thinking back, I really wanted to understand how we got here because you heard tonight, we've been using one-time funds to cover recurring costs. But this practice has been going on even before COVID, before 2020. It's been going on for nearly a decade. And after so many years of plugging the gap, we're paying the price that we've already heard about deferred maintenance to our buildings, unfilled staff positions in our town departments, and fraught negotiations. So, simply put, we need more money than we have. And as has been mentioned, I'll just hit it over the head with a rolling pin. There are three ways that towns can raise money: increasing taxes, increasing fees, and through new growth and redevelopment. And over the past seven years, with the exception of South Middle School, rather than ask residents and businesses for more money, we have compensated through borrowing and subsidies. So, two examples. It's true that an additional debt exclusion, had we asked for one for East Middle School, would have increased our tax bills. However, However, instead, we're paying $2.6 million annually to pay off that debt, which is coming out of our operating budget, which constrains available funds that we don't have to use elsewhere. Instead of asking residents to pay $1.50 more per week for trash collection, we have subsidized the trash fee. That equates to more than three-quarters of a million dollars a year, money we don't have to spend elsewhere. Add to that, we all know about the vacant, underutilized, and derelict properties that are not giving us the tax revenue we deserve. Residents are being asked to make sacrifices, and we need to hold owners of blighteded properties accountable for redevelopment of those properties. So in short, our low tax and fee rates that have been long a source of understandable pride are now a source of sacrifice. So, don't want to dwell on the doom and gloom, let's talk about solutions. Because we, as a community, have the power to reverse this trend. It did not happen overnight. It did not happen in the last one, two, three, or four, or even five years. And it's not going to be fixed overnight. But we can fix it. We can fix this. To improve our schools, increase town services, build back our reserves, there are three ways we can make new investments in our community, and we need to think together about what is going to be right for Braintree. The first is by entertaining a voter-approved tax increase. The second is by considering increasing fees. And the third is by welcoming or even incentivizing redevelopment on vacant and derelict properties that are detracting from our current tax base. The final option is one that none of us wants to make, and that's painful cuts. So I will be fully supporting this budget tonight, because otherwise, it means $4 million of cuts, which is a choice that I believe would set us back even further. And from here on out, I ask that let's start to focus on solutions to move us forward into the future. Thank you.
Who else? Okay, with that, do we have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
On 23025, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilors Ryan and Hume. All in favor to close the public hearing?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion for Order 23025? And I believe we have six motions and six votes.
Motion one, that the town of Braintree raise and appropriate the sum of $160,405,01 to provide for all the expenses for the maintenance and operation of the town's several departments and programs for the fiscal year 2024, and that the several sums herein set forth are hereby approved for the several purposes and are subject to the source of funding for said expenditures as outlined on the attached Exhibit A, specifically that the sum of $99,746 be transferred from the golf course receipts, and the sum of $300,000 be transferred from the overlay surplus account, the sum of $28,500 be transferred from the Waterways Improvement Fund, the sum of $22,000 be transferred from the sale of cemetery lots, the sum of $994,226 be transferred from the water and soil receipts, the sum of $55,994 be transferred from the stormwater receipts, the sum of $4,254,608 be transferred from the FY '22 certified free cash, and the balance be raised in the tax levy, which shall include $2,664,529 from the debt exclusion. So moved.
Second. Thank you, Councilors Ryan and Hume. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? One opposed, eight in favor.
Motion two, that the town of Braintree appropriate the sum of $1,933,892 to provide for all of the expenses for the maintenance, operation, and the town's golf course and related programs for the fiscal year 2024, and that several sums herein set forth are hereby approved for the several purposes as outlined on the attached Exhibit A, specifically that the sum of $1,933,892 be raised in the golf course receipts. So moved.
Second. Thank you, Councilors Ryan and Hume. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Three, that the town of Braintree appropriate the sum of $23,367,823 to provide for all of the expenses for the maintenance and operation of the town's water and soil division and related programs for the fiscal year '24, and that several sums herein set forth are hereby approved for the several purposes outlined on the attached Exhibit A, specifically that the sum of $103,694 be transferred from the water and soil rehabilitation fund, and the balance of $23,264,129 be raised in the water and soil receipts. So moved.
Second. Thank you, Councilors Ryan and Hume. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Four, that the town of Braintree appropriate the sum of $1,412,833 to provide for all of the expenses for the maintenance and operation of the town's stormwater division and related programs for the fiscal year 2024, and that the several sums herein set forth are hereby approved for the several purposes as outlined on the attached Exhibit A, specifically that the sum of $1,412,833 be raised in the stormwater receipts. So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Councilors Ryan and Hume. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Five, that the town of Braintree appropriate the sum of $630,175 to provide for all of the expenses for the maintenance and operation of the town's cable, television, public education, and government access, and related programs for the fiscal year 2024, and that the several sums herein set forth are hereby approved for the several purposes as outlined in the attached Exhibit A, specifically that the sum of $630,175 be raised in the cable franchise fees received. So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Councilors Ryan and Hume. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Six, the purpose to the general laws, Chapter 44, Section 31D, is that 31, or is that an I?
31.
31D, the town is authorized to incur a liability in excess of the amount appropriated for the snow and ice for fiscal year 2024. So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, Mr. Mayor, the budget passes. All right, moving on to our next item on this evening's agenda, which is 23026, Mayor, FY 2024 Budget, Specific to Community Preservation Committee, or Take Up Any Action Relative There Too. This is another public hearing, so do we have a motion to open the public hearing for Order 23026?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you very much. With that, I will again refer to Council Reynolds, Chairman of the Committee of Ways and Means, for the recommendation on 23026.
Thank you, Madam President. Last week, the Ways and Means Committee met and unanimously voted in favor of a recommend- referral.
Favorable recommendation.
Favorable referral, thank you.
Thank you, Chairwoman Reynolds. Is there anyone from the mayor's office who would wish to speak on this?
Madam President, Councilors-
Thank you, Madam Corrus.
Thank you, Council, for the previous vote. I rise in support and ask for your favorable recommendation. We've been able to accomplish many things that, from housing to a number of recreational things, notably pickleball and some other things from the Community Preservation Fund. So I ask for your favorable vote on this tonight, so we can continue doing those great things. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council Ryan, go right ahead.
Thank you. So for the community preservation funding and our use of those funds in the town of Braintree, I think we've had tremendous success over the years and very recently as well, where we've used these funds for historical sites. We're very proud in the town of Braintree of our history, and we've been able to use the funds to make sure we preserve that history. We've used it for our parks and recreation. We recently approved money to do the ballparks over down at Watson Park, which is wonderful. We had a lot of very happy folks here that night that we did that. We've approved it for pickleball, we've approved it for affordable housing. It's a wonderful thing in the town of Braintree, the way we use these funds, and I'm going to fully support all these motions. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Ryan. Any other councilor wish to speak on this? I'll just remind residents that our Community Preservation Fund comes from a 1% surcharge that is part of our property tax base. This was a vote taken by the town of Braintree, I think almost 20 years ago now, and helps to supplement our general operating fund for all the great programs in preservation and affordable housing and recreation that Council Ryan and the mayor mentioned. And I will also be fully supporting this this evening. Is there anyone from the general public who would wish to speak on 23026, the Community Preservation Committee? Okay, seeing none. That, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, public hearing is closed. Is there a motion for Order 23026? And we have several motions here, and we need to vote on each.
So the motion for the Town Council approval for fiscal year 2024 Community Preservation Committee Budget, C1, in accordance with the provisions of Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 44B, Section 5, and the recommendation of the Community Preservation Committee, that the sum of $125,000 be appropriated from the Community Preservation Fund to the Community Housing Reserve for acquisition, creation, preservation, or support of community housing, or the rehabilitation or restoration of community housing that is acquired or created as provided in Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 44B, Section 5. So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Councilors Ryan and Hume. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
C2, in accordance with the provisions of Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 44B, Section 5, and the recommendation of the Community Preservation Committee, that the sum of $125,000 be appropriated from the Community Preservation Fund to the Open Space Reserve for the acquisition, creation, or preservation of open space, or the rehabilitation or restoration of open space that is acquired or created as provided in Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 44B, Section 5. So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Councilors Ryan and Hume. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
C3, in accordance with the provisions of Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 44B, Section 5, and the recommendation of the Community Preservation Committee, that the sum of $125,000 be appropriated from the Community Preservation Fund to the Historical Resources Reserve for the acquisition, preservation, rehabilitation, and restoration of historical resources as provided in Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 44B, Section 5. So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
C4, in accordance with the provisions of Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 44B, Section 5, and the recommendation of the Community Preservation Committee, that the sum of $754,160 be appropriated from the Community Preservation Fund to the Community Preservation Budgeted Reserve as provided in Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 44B, Section 5. So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
C5, in accordance with the provisions of Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 44B, Section 5, and the recommendation of the Community Preservation Committee, that the sum of $59,430 be appropriated from the Community Preservation Fund to the fiscal year 2024 Administrative Operating Fund as provided in the Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 44B, Section 5, said funds to be expended under the direction of the Community Preservation Committee and by the Director of Planning and Community Development. So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Councilors Ryan and Hume. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All the motions are unanimous. Thank you. Right, our next item tonight is 23027, Mayor, FY 2024 Budget, Continuation of Revolving Funds, or Take Up Any Action Relative There Too. This is also a public hearing. So do we have a motion to open the public hearing for Order 23027?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, with that, I will turn to Council Reynolds again, Chairman of the Committee of Ways and Means, for the recommendation on Order 23027.
Thank you, Madam President. The Committee and Ways and Means met last week and voted unanimously for a favorable recommendation to the full council for Order 23027.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone from the mayor's office? Mr. Mayor, welcome back.
Madam President, Councilors, thank you to the Ways and Means Committee for a favorable recommendation, and the last one too, if I forgot to mention that. I would ask for your favorable vote on this. This is important for us for our bus fees and golf course and immunization fund in elder affairs. These accounts help them with their day-to-day operations. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mayor Kokoros. Is there any member of the council who wishes to speak on the revolving funds? Seeing none, anyone from the general public who wishes to speak on the revolving funds? All right, with that, I'll ask, is there a motion to close the public hearing for Order-
So moved.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Sorry.
Any opposed? All right, now is there a motion for 23027?
Yes, Madam President. Motion for the continuation of revolving funds, R1, that in accordance with the provisions of Chapter 44, Section 53E and a half of the general laws, the town of Braintree hereby sets the maximum amount that may be spent during fiscal year 2024, beginning July 1st, 2024, for the revolving funds established by ordinance for certain departments, boards, committees, agencies, officers, as follows: revolving fund, elderly affairs services and activities, department, board, committee, agency, or officer, Department of Elderly Affairs; FY '24 spending limit, $30,000; immunizations, Board of Health, $50,000; library materials, library trustees, $45,000; library room rental, library trustees, $5,000; recycling materials, mayor in conjunction with recycling coordinator, $4,800; household hazardous waste, mayor in conjunction with recycling coordinator, $50,000; full-day kindergarten school committee, $1,100,000; pro shop, mayor in conjunction with the director of golf operations, $250,000; food and beverage, mayor in conjunction with the director of golf operations, $500,000; school bus, school committee, $500,000. So moved.
I'm at second. Will we have a correction, though? It says July 1st, beginning on July 1st, 2024. That should read July 1st, 2023.
My motion is with that correction.
Second, thank you.
Thank you, Councilors Ryan and Hume. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is unanimous. Thank you very much. Congratulations, Mr. Mayor, on all the budget items passing this evening. All right, and we have already gone over the supplemental. Council Ryan?
Thank you. I just want to thank the mayor's office, and I want to thank all the department heads that are here tonight for all of their hard work coming up with this budget. You know, in this day and age, it's people everywhere are having a hard time hiring qualified people to do the job, and we're very lucky in this town that we have a lot of qualified people with a lot of experience that do a great job, and it's part of what makes this town great. As I'm going through these revolving funds, I think of Jeff Kuntz, who is the recycling coordinator, and the man who taught me about sustainability many years ago. When he started talking about sustainability, I didn't even know what he was talking about. And he's, it's that type of people we have in the town that do a great job. So I just want to say thank you for everything you do every day.
Thank you, Council Ryan. All right, with that, is there a motion to move all measures under New Business to their respective committees?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Councilors Ryan and Hume. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Noted. 23, 04. Did you get that, Clerk?
Thank you. Thank you, Council O'Brien. All right, our next meeting will be on Tuesday, June 6th, 2023, at 7:30 PM. Thank you again for everyone in attendance this evening. Thank you to B-CAM, our fantastic B-CAM team, who is always here televising to bring this meeting out to our residents, Bill Needham and Jerry Comack. And with that, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor to adjourn?
Aye.
Any opposed? This meeting is adjourned. Thank you. Thank you.